Now it's the law of New York City. So, Board of Election Campaign Finance Board should have taken more leads early on to educate the voters. So, right now, ranked choice voting is great, but we don't have enough education. It's candidate's job is the Board of Elections Campaign Finance Board to educate everybody. And we cannot turn the clock back and delay it and postpone it and overturn the will of the voters. So, we must go forward, move forward, charge forward, and respect the law. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, Mamita.
Yeah, good evening, Assemblymember David Webberin.
Good evening.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for your question. And I actually helped pass ranked choice voting. And Assemblymember Webberin, I don't know if you recall this, but we worked together to help pass it. You were one of the endorsers of the ranked choice voting campaign.
I was, I was. I just wanted to know the strategy for ranked choice voting. That's what I'm asking.
Absolutely. So, what I'm doing was cater the communities in Queens and across the city on how to organize a ranked choice voting campaign, which is a good thing. Because ultimately, what we've had in the past is people, right? Votes, communities having multiple candidates running and the vote splitting that was going on. And it didn't allow communities to have a chance or an opportunity to run a candidate and win. So, I think what ranked choice voting does is allow more women and minority candidates a chance to run and, you know, make their voices heard. And so, we have to respect the will of the voter. And the strategy should be to find common ground with each other, right? And run a ranked choice voting campaign where we're not tearing down one another, but we're coming together on the issues that we are finding common ground on for our communities, to advance the issues, the agenda of our communities, right? So, there are many candidates who we would, for example, myself, I identify with on certain issues, like the fact that we're Bangladeshi, or maybe the fact that some of us grew up in a very working-class neighborhood, right? And what that was like. So, these are common grounds that I feel like we can all come together on. And instead of running a campaign where we're attacking one another, right? We're focusing only on policies and issues that differentiate us. And so, the beauty of ranked choice voting is people get to pick their first choice, second choice, third choice, fourth choice, or fifth choice. So, they may like a candidate from their community, right? But also, somebody who may be talking about a specific issue that matter more to them.
Mamita, thank you so much.
It's gonna be to work with everybody and reach out to all the voters, not just Bangladeshi voters. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. Let's go to Mujib Rahman next.
Can you give like a heads up when it's like close to thirty seconds?
I signaled like this. I don't know if you could see my hand.
Okay, got it.
There's about eighty-three people. I know it's gonna be very hard. I am trying to keep a monitor of the watch as well, and I do have a backup who is keeping track of the time. Thank you so much. Mujib Rahman, you're next.
Something on my screen. Something wrong with the screen?
Yeah, no, don't sharing to the screen.
Shanaaz, I think you have to stop sharing your screen. Thank you so much.
Okay, now it's, now it's okay, okay?
That's good.
Uh, start now?
Yeah, you're good. Please.
Please answer the question, ranked choice voting.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Webberin. Uh, I'm the second one here that, similar with your family, Musa is the first one. Since we came here a long time ago. Besides that, I am for the ranking choice. I'm the only one among the candidate for a special election Bangladeshi community. I request them, we are not opponent. We are all together. We have to tell everybody they can exercise their multiple vote. Last night, I told everybody, this is not a debate to tear down each other. We have to explain the system, all our community. They please try to exercise to write a vote multiple, one to five. At least one to four. We are four of Bangladeshi now. So, I am for it, and I'm explaining to everybody how it works. I'm openly telling everyone, we are Bangladeshi four, please vote for all four of us. That's the only way. One of us will be elected. Not only by community vote, whoever can reach outside the community. He has the edge, and community vote will help that person to be elected, either me or anyone. But my request, all community, please support the ranking vote. This is the only way we can represent, and one of us will be elected. And this is good.
I think.
Other way.
I think it's one minute.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. Um, I hope Assemblyman David Webberin, you don't mind. We're gonna go to Jennifer for the next question, then that will come back to you. Unless Senator John Liu and they also come in, then I'm gonna go to them for their next question. Jennifer?
Well, I'd love to hear from my new colleague, who already hit the ground running, is doing a great job in the next district for me, Jennifer Rajkumar. I'm looking forward to her questions.
Thank you, Assemblyman Webberin. It is such a great thing to share a border with you. And we do such amazing work together. It's great to see you. And thank you to BAG as well. I want to give a shout out to BAG for being such a force. I had the honor of organizing with BAG this general election, and they are dynamite. Everyone responds to BAG, and they know how to organize like no one else. So, thank you for everything you do, as well as getting legislation passed at the state level. That is extraordinary for our community.
Thank you.
And I just want to say also, a warm welcome and congratulations to all of the candidates. I have known many of you for many years, and I'm just so proud of all of you. I know how hard it is doing what you're doing. And I truly hope that our community continues to make history. And finally, get a South Asian City Council member. It is long overdue. So, thank you all. My question is about unity. United we stand, divided we fall. What do you see as the obstacles to creating unity among the South Asian community and also with other ethnic groups? And also, right now is also a very divisive time in our politics generally. So, how will you create unity across ideology? And I guess I would like to know, number one, what do you see as the obstacles to unity? And then, number two, how will you overcome those obstacles?
Excellent question. Thank you so much. Let's go to Dilip Naq for that. Dilip, are you there?
Yes, I am here. First was a great question, and, you know, congratulations again to our newly-elected Assemblywoman Jennifer, good friend, and also I had a pleasure to work with her in our organization, New American Voter Association. She led the organization for several years, and I'm grateful to her leadership, what she has done with Nava. Look, the reality is, I think, what David asked earlier about the ranked choice voting, and that really solved this problem. So, having a multiple candidate, you know, each one of us bring a unique set of strengths. Each one of us has a unique background. And the idea is, in ranked choice voting, you are voting for all of these different choices. And one of us will champion. And the way we're gonna champion that is aggregating everyone idea. So, as a community, as a voter, you are gonna get the best out of the best. Thank you.
Next, please. Shama Said.
Thank you. Good evening, Assemblymember-elect Jennifer Rajkumar. And we also had a great opportunity to work when we're together with Savoy's. So, thank you for all your wonderful work and congratulations. Your question goes to the heart of democracy, goes to the heart of creating relationship and partnership. The obstacle I see is communication and lack of respect for people's perspectives, belief system, and policy differences. If we can work together without getting personal, without attacking someone personally, and if we have, we share same political beliefs, then we can overcome those obstacles. And unity is a matter of choice. Do you believe in a system where you respect somebody? Do you believe in a system of temperament? Do you believe in a system of check and balance? When you think about all those aspects, then you can come to unity. And the unity is a aspect of our everyday system that we need to exercise actively. And when you do that, we can all unite together for the greater cause. And right now, it's our democracy. And I am super excited for the President-elect Biden and Kamala Harris to bring us all together. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Excellent response. Let's go to Mujib Rahman for your response.
Mamita, supposed to be Mamita.
Mamita? Mamita, please, go ahead.
Sure. Yeah. Hi, Assemblymember-elect Jennifer Rajkumar. Congratulations on your win, your victory. So, yeah, on the question of unity, look, unity is important when it's unity of working-class people who are suffering right now. But sometimes, unity is used as a cover for suppression. Because you have a ruling class that is pouring millions of dollars into our politics, right? So, sometimes, we are gonna have policy disagreements, and I think that's healthy. That's healthy. These disagreements are important to advance our democracy. And so, I think what we all need to do is come together on the issues that are impacting our families today and unite behind the policies that help them. And to me, that's what unity means, is representation of working-class people. And all of us getting behind that. Unity means taking money out of politics so that we can have honest conversations and have healthy disagreements. But at the end of the day, we know that we're here for working-class people, the most vulnerable people, the people that are impacted by the tragedy of this pandemic, right? The, this, the pandemic. So, to me, that's what it means. It's not about ideology, right? It's common sense to give everybody access to healthcare. It's common sense to make sure that people have the money to pay rent during a pandemic when they're being asked to stay home and quarantine, knowing that some working-class people don't have that luxury. So, those are not ideological discussions. Frankly, I don't know why some people even make it a debate because I think that unity means that prioritizing the people that are at the front lines of the pain, right? And that's what I'm here for, not necessarily around ideological divides, but about, or party, but rather the policies. And that's what that means for me.
I can use it.
Thank you so much, Mamita. Let's go to Mujib Rahman. And then, we will ask Senator Robert Jackson to pose his question after this is answered. Go ahead, Mujib Rahman.
Uh, thank you, Jennifer.
Just mention to the time, please.
One minute. You have one minute to answer.
Oh, thank you, Honorable Congressman Jennifer. If I understood your question, the problem with our unity and how to overcome with that. If you mean South Asian community or my own community, we have too many leaders and all victims. No one can target or deliver anything. It may hurt them, but this is the fact. We became candidate four of us. Those who wants to talk about unity, they should come forward. Like, they have to prepare now on to choose candidate since rankings are multiple. Fund them, donate them, help them petitioning, and then come forward. Then we could be united easily. It has been choice now and then, but just one thing. On the other hand, most of us here, I think I believe all are Democrats. The issue is a big thing. Like, I am against the funding policy of safety. So, that's another, we have to find common ground to be together for safety issue. So, these are the things we are divided, but if we prepare ahead of time, like June primary or November election, we have to put together a coalition team for possible candidate. And all the others come together and have to vote, and that's why we're united.
Thank you so much, Brother Mujib Rahman. I want to acknowledge our Brooklyn Borough President, he's here, Eric Adams. We will give him the floor at the end a little bit, unless he has a question to pose to the candidates. Then he can go after our Senator Robert Jackson. If not, we'll go to Senator Robert Jackson for the next question. I thank you for participating. He has participated in the last one marvelously, and we thank him for always being with us. Senator Robert Jackson, take it away with your question, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Assalamualaikum, brothers and sisters. It's always good to be in the Queens in the 24th District, understanding the issues and concerns and looking at the candidates. I wish you all well. So, I just have a question for you and my colleagues. I see David Webberin and Jennifer here. I don't see the Borough President of Brooklyn, but my regards to all of the leaders that are in the Zoom. So, I ask you to consider what other candidates are running within the 24th Councilmatic District, in which you're running to be the next City Councilmember. And how do you see ranked voting going to impact your race? And what are your strategies in order to win regarding ranked choice voting?
I think we had a similar type of question from Assemblyman David Webberin, but.
Really?
We had a similar type of question.
You came late, Robert. I know. I'm trying to make up.
Senator, you had a very good question about the Campaign Finance Board. You want, maybe you want to ask that to see how they have done in their fundraising so far? So, we can also see where they are in that game. Go ahead, please.
Sure. Understanding that under CFP, there's a certain amount of, that you need to raise in order to max out. And so, I asked each one of you, all within the framework of a minute, have you done that and have you taken advantage of the part that you could spend up to X amount of dollars this year that would not be counted towards next year? So, within one minute.
Go ahead, Dilip Naq, please.
All right. So, I guess I take the first shot of every question. Good. Look, Senator Robert Jackson, I'm really grateful to the question that you have asked. We have not really seen each other for a long time. So, and I hear you're doing a lot of good thing in your district, and I commend and salute you the work that you're doing every day for working-class people. Look, I started my campaign fundraising effort back in mid-October. Haven't had a really chance to do major fundraising because due to the COVID, but through the word of mouth and really by talking to friends and leaders in the community. We have already maxed out on our, you know, CFP dollar. And we have well over 300 people contributed to our campaign, and these are all small donations. And more than 50% of those contributions come from my district. And that means people are serious, people want us to win this race, and they believe what we put together as a platform. So, I'm excited, and the community is excited, and we have a lot of energy into this campaign.
Thank you. And did you take advantage of spending X amount of dollars that would not be counted towards next year?
No, since I did not take advantage of spending for this year.
Okay, thank you.
Next, please.
Shama Said.
Next is Shama Said.
Thank you. Good evening, Senator Jackson. Good to see you again.
Good to see you.
It's a very good question because, as you know, funding is fundamental to running a good election. I have been fortunate enough to be in a district surrounded by people who know me for more than 30 years, and I have reached my funding goals. And I'm fortunate enough that I have donation from small and to the max that one can give. So, it's fortunate enough to be able to be in that place. And I am super excited that we have a campaign of people. People who believe in my policies, people who believe in my goals, and people who believe in my vision to bring representation and advocacy for in District 24. So, I am quite happy with the fundraising goals that we have met.
So, my question is, have you maxed out as of yet? And if not, how far are you away? And whether or not you took advantage of the spending cap this year that would not be counted towards next year?
I have not maxed out, Senator Jackson, and I have not maxed out my spending because I started my election in September.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Mamita, you're next.
Thank you, and good evening, Senator Robert Jackson. I believe we've never met, but it's really good to see you online. To answer your question, I just want to say I'm so proud of the, I'm very grateful for the New York City Matching Funds Program that allows working-class candidates like me to be able to compete, right? Especially when there's real estate money pouring in in our legislature. And in terms of our, how much we've raised, by internal count, we have passed the threshold to qualify for matching funds, and we have 100-plus donors within the district that have supported, that are supporting me. And in terms of maxing out, we're not quite sure what, if we are there or not yet. It's possible. We're still, you know, we're still raising money. I, so I don't have quite an exact answer for that, but we're, you know, we're close. And to your second question, not yet, no.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mujib Rahman. You're next.
Uh, thank you, Senator. I'm not a big shopper, other than a tour. Very specific answer. I raise around $12,000, spend them all. I need another $5,000, $6,000 to maximize my CFP fund limit. So, I need everybody's help, go to my NOIC vote and contribute there. That's your answer.
So, Jihad, let me just say to all of you, you can have all the money in the world and still not win. So, it's what you do out in the field, on the ground, talking to all your constituents, and have your team just working very hard. I just want to say that to all of you. Money does not always help you. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Senator. If you don't mind, I would like to go next to Said Muzaffar. He is by profession a pharmacist. He is also the chairman of the Board of Trustees. We thought we'd put in the little mix of inviting a community leader. He is not the only one, of course, here on the forum, but we did invite him. So, we are going to ask him to pose a question. He did pose a very tough question the last time, and so I'm hoping for a tougher one this time. Said Muzaffar.
Assalamualaikum and good evening, distinguished Assemblymen, Assemblywoman, Senators, candidates, and audiences. I want to thank Bangladesh American Advocacy Group for hosting this very important community meeting. And on the profile, they have been very active in defense, community issues, and they've been very successful in passing some bills too. So, thanks to BAG. And also, thank you for giving me the opportunity to be a part of this group. So, my question is pretty straightforward.
Muzaffar, you are muted yourself again.
We cannot, okay. I'm sorry. Okay, I'll state my question again. So, why will the constituents select you to represent them? In other words, how to stand up against other well-qualified candidates with regards to legislative and budgetary issues? Thank you.
Dilip Naq.
Look, the reality is, you know, far too long, Queens has not been getting its fair share, and particularly our district. In District 24, today, we have a school, our children attending in a 200% occupancy. It is not right. You know, we had leader, we had for so long, they have not done enough to provide the resource that our community need. Now, Queens had become epic of the epic center. It didn't have to be that way. We have a far less hospital bed than compared to any other borough in the city. We have not made enough investment to build the hospital capacity, RG care. In here, in the borough, our children has to travel four to five hours to go to a specialized high school. It's not right, where 40% of our children travel from Queens to go to those schools. Why not build a school here in Queens? I think it's a very simple and common sense approach. And that solves also the diversity and inclusion that Mayor and Senator has been asking for. So, the idea is, you know, we, you know, my work that I have been doing in the Community Education Council, you know, I have witnessed this thing, this issue, every single day. So, these are the mainstream issue. These are the issue for every community. And majority of our children attend public school. So, by strengthening the public school and hospital, I think is a way to do. And as your council member, those to be my number-one priority. And that's how we win with all other candidate. And I have been working, building those coalition. I've been working with the school and the hospital. In fact, my entire background from healthcare and education.
Thank you so much, Dilip. I want to take this time to recognize a few people from the community, Brother Kazi Halim. He was the former president and the Board of Trustees Chair, as well as Dr. Junoon Chowdhury, two-term General Secretary. We have also Brother Manju Chowdhury here as well. Of course, I've mentioned to you, Eric Adams is here. I will ask him to just maybe say a brief hello. We have Anthony Miranda, who ran for Queens Borough President. We also have Ms. Babdeen, who's running for City Council from District 37. We have Sergeant Ershad Siddiqui. We also have Captain, Captain Karam Chowdhury. Badrul Khan is also here. We have many, many decorated folks here in this forum. I hope I am not offending you if I have not mentioned your name. Hopefully, in the next round, I'll mention your name. Brother Shah Dhahan, I see also you're joined from Texas. So, next, please answer the question, and I'm going to mix up that order. I did get a call, why am I going to Dilip Naq all the time for the first question? So, I'm going to mix that up a little bit. So, I am not looked at as playing favorite to Dilip Naq or anybody else. So, I'm gonna mix that up. Go ahead, Mujib Rahman.
Perhaps you try to put me in a challenge. That's okay. I'm a big boy to take the challenge.
Well, you can look at it in two ways, right? So, I will, Mujib Rahman, for the, to answer that question, please.
Uh, whose question is that? I missed the question because my call is unmute sometimes.
That was Brother Said Muzaffar's question about funding. Brother Said Muzaffar, you want to reiterate your question, please?
Sure. Let's put it this way, how do you stand up against other well-qualified candidates with regards to legislative and budgetary issues?
I mean, we are here for all Bangladeshi candidates. That's what you're talking about or something different?
Well, let's talk among the four of you.
Okay. Among the four of us, the budgetary and.
And legislative issues.
Okay. This district was well represented, beginning when I came in here with the Webberin family and after that whoever start, they, those city councils were among the best in the city. They start very well. But in that context, our community may not took the opportunity. I don't know why, but if I am elected or one of us elected in this process, ranking process, community will be benefited first. That's my priority. If it is job-wise and other service-wise, that's my view, and that's I try to do for the community better. But this district was among represented, top the best city council among the cities, from the debt with personal family to last councilman. It's not true. It's not true that the district was elected fund-wise from the city.
Thank you, Brother Mujib Rahman. Let's go to Momita, and then we'll go next to Shoma Said. And then we'll ask our Borough President to say a few words. Go ahead.
Sure. Thank you so much for that question. Look, the answer is policy. Policy. Ultimately, that is how we're going to differentiate ourselves. And I am the most working-class candidate here. My, I am the child of immigrants. My mom was laid off during COVID. My dad was an essential worker packaging medicine at the factory. So my policies help all working-class people, the people who are the 99%. And ultimately, that is what's going to differentiate me from the other candidates, and it already does. I'm the only candidate here on this panel who supports on, on our website have explicitly said I support the formation of tenants unions, that I want, I want to provide right to counsel to tenants who are facing evictions right now, right? And that's policies that help working-class people is what differentiates me. Because at the end of the day, I don't have to wear shoes of a working-class person in order to sympathize. I am wearing those shoes. I am that person. And so I will be able to truly speak to the struggles of our community and articulate it in a way that everybody can relate, not just the Bangladeshi community, but the Latino community, the African-American community, other South Asian ethnic groups. So I believe that ultimately, it comes down to policy, whether or not you're, or and also integrity, whether or not you're taking money from the people that are, that are lobbying against tenants, right? Like that are lobbying against the rights of workers. And I have pledged not to take any money from real estate developers. I have pledged not to take any money from the fossil fuel industry or the police unions because at the end of the day, I want to work for everyday people like you and me. And so this is how I know I'll be able to differentiate myself as a true working-class person running for City Council.
Thank you, Momita. Before Shoma takes the question or answers that question, I do want to recognize Felicia Singh, City Council Candidate for District 32, Shahana Hanif, as well as Ali Adlati, who is the Director for Controller Scott Stringer. They're all here. And I believe John Klow, he's here, also the, you wrote it here, I'm missing it. Oh, here it is. He's the Executive Director of the Greater Flushing Chamber of Commerce. So he is here as well. And the Jenny Prasad, First Vice President of New American Voters Association. So I thank all of you, all of the decorated folks who are here, leadership who are here. And I hope we make the right choice in putting our best forward. So Shoma Said, please take the next question.
Thank you for that question, Mr. Muzaffar. So I'm an attorney. I've been practicing law for 16 years. I've been dealing with legislation and policy almost all of my life through my education as well as my practice. So that's number one, what distinguishes me from all the candidates. But moreover, so we need to think about what the policies we will put forward for in District 24, where people are struggling and suffering, whether it's a small homeowner, whether it's a renter, where there is a business owner, whether it's a mom like myself with school education and remote learning. So I am putting forward policies where, for small businesses, I'm proposing that we give $1,000 a month as basic support to small businesses. We provide grants, not loans, to any small business whose revenues is 200,000 or less. I'm also proposing to create a community business liaison. So we can talk to the businesses on Hillside Avenue, Indian Turnpike, Main Street, Casino Boulevard, 150th Street, because I know I'm out there. I'm talking to everybody. I am proposing that we help small homeowners so they don't have to face foreclosures. They can stay in the homes. And I'm proposing that renters who cannot truly afford to pay all these months of rent due to lack of employment, that we cancel those rents because we have to have policies that are practical, humanitarian, as well as that can help the largest number of people. So I am here to represent everyone in District 24 and help everybody. And as for education, as a mom, I am concerned about remote learning and how much my kids are learning. I'm concerned about the digital divide we have in the city. So we need to close that gap, and we need to help every student, every parent, and every caregiver to make sure our children are educated because they're the future, whether you're working class, middle class, upper class. Without good education, we cannot strive and make ourselves grow in this community. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Shoma Said. We did have Eric Adams here. He had to leave. I don't see him here anymore unless anybody else sees him. So thank you Borough President of Brooklyn for joining us. He is the next, he is running for the mayor of New York City. So it would have been nice to just hear from him for a second. I believe we are almost towards the closing of the program. It's about 6 o'clock, so it would be unnecessary for me to keep you guys here. I believe we have, through the questioning, at least have scratched the surface. I think in this second phase, we have done a little bit more to know our candidates and who we are going to put forward. Inshallah, we'll, behind the closed doors, we'll make a decision. Our board is going to sit together tomorrow and see who we are going to endorse. We'll keep you in the loop as to, you know, who we're going to put forward as a candidate. We have a lot to review. We not only have this debate to go on, but the last one. And I know many of you have been on other programs, so we'll be reviewing those to see how you fare. And we do want to put a candidate who represents us well into governance. So I would like to go next to Board of Thanks. Brother Kamal, who is going to give a Board of Thanks on one of the advisors.
Yeah, actually, thank you. Appreciate that. One question was came from the audience that how would you help middle-class homeowner who relies on rent to pay their mortgages? So this is a question that for the candidates, if you have few minutes, you have chosen. I know you are moderating it. I'd like to ask you.
I think they got beat up on this question yesterday. I was watching them, and this is one of the proposals. So I don't know if anybody wants to take that question, but please be brief, 30 seconds. So let's go to Shoma for that, 30 seconds.
Right, right. We need to help homeowners who are suffering and struggling to pay mortgages, who are in forbearance. We need to make sure they don't get evicted. So what that means is, we might, we'll have to help them with grants, also maybe work with banks to cancel back mortgage payments.
And he's been doing so well in the work release. And he's been like kind of, you know, you know, serving, you know, you know, people, you know.
David, mute yourself, David. David, mute yourself.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Shoma. Go ahead.
No, thank you. I answered that question. Thank you, Kamalai.
All right. I want to recognize Henry Goldman. He is a reporter for Bloomberg Television. I believe he's here. I want to go straight to him, even though he did come late, for him to pose a question, if you don't mind. David?
I'm here. Thank you. My question really, you know, my interest in this is basically that I'm just interested in the emergence of South Asians as a political force in New York City and around the country. And, you know, I'm just wondering where this, how this developed? I mean, did you look at the experiences of other immigrants? Let's say in New York City, whether it was the Irish, the Italians, the Jews, and sort of base that as a model? Or is this just part of the American experience that such movements develop as communities become more, more connected and more, and establish an identity and establish some economic security?
All right. I guess we cut into that question, so we'll go to this question. We can go to Mujib Rahman first for this one.
Yes, Mr. Goldman. I am running for everyone in every community. This state is multicultural, multi-language. I ran in 2013. I was the only one candidate. Those who are with me this time, I didn't saw any one of them came forward to help me or support me, donate anything in that nature. I'm very proud. This time, everybody is coming forward. So we are moving into that direction, maximum all other communities. And I have my mention, Wepkin family is here. He knows more than anybody, our community working with other community. Those who are outside of the district, they may not know, but he knows. And as I mentioned, all the councilmen before this term would be elected, hopefully me. They were well-served, they were well knowledgeable, and they get more fund than any other district here. I suspect all of the councilmen were serving the district. This district was not neglected at all. But with the Goldman question, yes, we need to mix up with other South Asian community. We are doing with many different ways. We have formed a New American Democratic Club long ago. Mr. Wepkin knows, he's on one of the founding groups. And I was involved in Eastern Queen Democratic Club. I was involved in another Democratic Club. I don't know how many of you know here the name of Tim Menton or Joseph Colletti elected. I was in that club. So many of you may not hear that time. I was with this process. I was working with other communities also, long time. Thank you.
Thank you, Brother Mujib Rahman. Momita, you want to answer that question, please?
Yes, but can I also just quickly address the homeowner thing?
Go ahead.
Okay, so I just, I also wanted to say with canceling rent, it doesn't necessarily mean that rent is canceled. They don't... Because we do want homeowners to be able to pay their mortgage. We need to make, or that we work with state legislators to cancel their mortgage and with renters, provide them with direct cash assistance, right? Low-income renters, not everyone, but people who are low-income, money so that they can pay their rent. And so that would help make sure that small homeowners aren't impacted because the city has decided to help, you know, low-income renters. And to, the other question that Henry so graciously posed, I think that right now, what we have is, we're, I am from a community. There are 66,000 of Bangladeshi Americans in Queens. Many of us make up, are the backbone of the city's economy. We're cab drivers, we're working low-wage jobs at Dunkin' Donuts, 7-Elevens, where the, where your Uber drivers, right? And we're also at the front lines of the housing crisis. In our district, we have one of the worst real estate developers in the city, in the state, Zara Realty. And they have 12 to 13 buildings here, and many of them, many of the tenants are South Asian and from the Bangladeshi community. So I think that representation from working-class groups matter. And I think it's really wonderful that because of ranked choice voting, so many people like me from our immigrant communities are able to have this, receive this platform and have our voices be heard. And it is very similar to what other previous communities in the past, what they've gone through. Every immigrant community who has had to come here have had to fight, right, for their rights. And they ate Polish immigrants, right? They had to fight for their housing rights, housing justice. So this is, perhaps it is like a cycle. It's almost like it does sort of run in a cycle. But, you know, it's important that we recognize these efforts are being made, that movements are being built, where we're mobilizing working-class people. And this country has had a rich history, and New York State, New York City has had a rich history of, especially in the labor movement. And so, which is the movement of working-class people. And I think what you're seeing with all of, all of us running is sort of a, it's a step forward and contributing to the existing movement.
You are, you have, you are muted yourself.
I'm sorry. I was just saying I had to interject. Shoma, do you want to entertain the question, please? I think there's two questions floating around right now with Mr. Goldman's question as well as the rental question.
Rental question was already answered by her. Mr. Goldman's question is...
Let's go to Goldman's question. Okay.
I need to talk about the housing one, when you get done.
Thank you, Mr. Goldman, for joining us and amplifying South Asian struggles, South Asian voices, and South Asian political leadership as we're developing in New York State as well as all around the country. You're correct. You're correct that there's a historical perspective to the development of political earnestness and desire to run for offices. So offices historically being for people who are in a comfortable position to run for offices. In my case, I came to this country 32 years ago with my parents. I was young. We struggled. And we went to school, we worked hard, and we continue to struggle in different ways. For me to run for office, it was a personal decision because I realized that we are lacking representation and advocacy in my district, in New York, in here, Queens. And recently, our council member resigned. There's a vacuum of leadership now. So I have decided to come forward. I have a comfortable job as an attorney. I am the president of the Queens County Women's Bar Association. I'm the first South Asian in 90 years' history of this beautiful organization. And I am looking to step up. I'm not looking, this is not a stepping stone for another position for me. I really want to work for the people that I have all of my life, for everyone, since I was in high school, college, and law school and after law school. So it's a personal decision coupled with the opportunities that you get. And this is the right moment for me to be running and representing and providing leadership, advocacy. And when I get to City Council, I'm going to work for everybody. And this is about voice, when I want to give voice to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Delete Not, you want to, I think there's two questions for you.
Yes. Well, first of all, you know, I have some radical idea. And I have expressed those and shared those ideas in my other forum. Don't force people out. Don't evict them. It is a painful process. It's not right. But at the same time, we cannot have homeowner leaving them out in the cold during the COVID. Tenant, they were not able to pay the rent. And, but homeowner, they were forced to pay the mortgage, and then they have to pay the taxes. The idea is, you know, we need to suspend taxes for the next full year. And in addition to this, solving the housing problem, we need to legalize the basement immediately and also subsidize homeowners so they can legalize the basement in a proper way so that safety and security can be provided. And number two, you know, I, like I said in the beginning of my, this forum, far too long, we have not getting our fair share. It's time that we demand, we ask, we bring a fair share in our district, in our community, building infrastructure. There is so much needed, whether it's a hospital, whether it is a school. Now, we cannot have burdened the Queens to build Manhattan or other borough. We cannot continue on that path. And secondly, it's not about South Asian or Bangladeshi or... And secondly, it's not about South Asian or Bangladeshi or any group, you know, it's about bringing a leadership that solve the very fundamental needs for our community. And it just so happened to be in District 24, and we are 38% South Asian. And obviously, you know, we are doing a lot more, and you see a rising of candidate who wants to represent this district. And we bringing a good idea, and suddenly I have, you know, the experience and the leadership that are needed in these dire needs. And in fact, next step of city council needs to bring an experience, and who has done this? And I have done big things, and I have managed multi-million dollar budget, and I think I have the experience to lead this district into the 21st century, and I bring the 21st century experience. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I think, you know, we have been here with us for an hour and 15 minutes. I would like to next go to our senators, assemblyman, to, I know brother Mujib is raising his hand. Okay, go ahead, quickly answer that question. Go ahead, brother Mujib.
Regarding the housing, if we cannot keep the tenant or community here, who is going to put for us? So I leave them here, but my request to those tenants, those who can, please pay the rent. Please pay the rent, that's number one. Otherwise, you cannot here. How long, who can stop eviction? After December 40, eviction will be processed. But by this time, those who got parole health, state health, please pay the rent. You've got $1,200, you've got $600, plus you've got unemployment, and now, I know it may not, it may go against me, but that's the fact, that's my name, voice for the voice, as I always tell the truth straight. You make more money in COVID times than working. So why you are behind pay the rent? You must pay rent, and owner has seven or more bills to pay. Yes, what mortgage can do, mortgage can, what we saw in the last session, parole came forward to pay the mortgage, one-year extension, those could be done, but those are different level. I like to see city council point of view. There are lots of buildings, high-end buildings in south side of Hillside, but I want them sending north side of the Hillside.
Thank you so much, brother Mujib Rahman. I'm going to go to closing remarks, and I will ask Jennifer Rajkumar for some parting advice, parting words to all of our candidates, all of our community. Tomorrow, we'll sit together behind closed doors, discuss about you, the candidates, the good and the bad and the ugly, and we'll make the decision as to who we are going to support as a candidate. So I thank all of you, the elected officials, for being part of this process and helping us. I thank our Henry Goldman also participating, Shaanaz Hussein as well, the TV personalities, brother from ITV, Shahidullah, as well, our partners here, Ms. Ba Abdine from Bapties who sponsored us, Khalid Amiri who is also a city council member. I apologize in advance if I have not mentioned your name. So Jennifer, please take the... Harish, yes, is also here. Thank you so much. Go ahead, Jennifer, please.
I'd just like to thank you all for stepping up. As I said, I know how hard it is to do this, and I know that you're all public servants at heart, and so my hat's off to you and I applaud you. It's time to make history, it's time to get a South Asian in the city council. It's long overdue. Our time has come. So I would say my parting advice, which I've been asked to give, I would tell you to stay true to your values, that's the most important thing. Do what you think is right and don't get swayed by forces trying to push on you. Always go by your convictions, because then you can look back and say, yes, that was me. And I'm proud of the race that I ran. So thank you all very much. Good luck.
Thank you so much. I believe...
Could I just make a statement also?
Yes, absolutely, we're going to go to you. We're going, we're coming to you next. So go ahead, you got the floor.
Yeah, again, I have a lot of friends in this race. I have not made an endorsement in this special election, because I know too many of the candidates, but I really think it's terrific that so many people in the South Asian community have put themselves forward. And as my new colleague Jennifer said, it's not an easy thing to put yourself forward and to, and to run. So, you know, I really want to applaud everybody. You know, I really am so proud to represent such a large South Asian district in my Assembly District. I think I'm probably one of the largest South Asian populations in any Assembly District. And I really think it's wonderful that we have so many candidates putting themselves forward, and I wish everybody luck, and it's wonderful for democracy, and, you know, I want to encourage everybody. Thank you.
And if I'm not mistaken, Assemblyman, you're running for comptroller, right?
I am, I am.
All right, so we'll be looking...
Actually, we're going to be announcing it officially this week, so stay tuned.
Thank you so much, thank you. We'll go next to our Senator Robert Jackson.
First, thank you for inviting me to come in, to listen to the questions and the response from the candidates. I still don't know, besides the four that are here, the South Asians that are running for the city council in the 24th, how many other candidates are running? And I don't want to know the answer, but that you have to know that, to understand if in fact the goal and objective is to elect a South Asian to the 24th city council seat, then you have to, if you're really truly for that, and if you are, you need to consider where you are overall, and make a decision whether or not it's in your best interest to continue or to then work with the community overall. And I say that because sometimes, I remember when lines were redrawn many years ago, and Stanley Michaels, who was my city council member, when they redrew the lines to make this seventh councilmatic district a black district, and there were, I think, three or four blacks running, and Stanley Michaels won. But the district was drawn to be a black district. And after term limits, I ran with, there were 10 of us in the race, and I won with one-third of the total vote, and Stanley Michaels endorsed me about three weeks prior to the actual election. But the bottom line is, I understand that you, each and every one of you, want to be the city council member, but I ask you to really reflect on, from a holistic point of view, on behalf of the Bangladeshi community and South Asian community. And with that, I'd say good luck to each and every one of you.
I'm going to ask Brother Kamal Buiyan to take the floor as the chairman of Bangladeshi American Advocacy Group. I know there are many, many questions from the floor, especially Brother Ms. Ba Abdine has personally requested me that we should take some questions from the floor. And I believe we are at 6:20, 6:23 right now, I believe it's a little late. Ms. Ba Abdine, do you have a pointed question for anyone in particular, or just a...
General, I have a question for everyone, actually.
Is it a good one?
One question I would like...
Is it a good one?
Yeah, one particular question I want to ask every candidate, and I would like to hear from them.
Is it a good one?
Of course, yes, definitely.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, I don't know, let me introduce myself. I'm a founder of a nonprofit organization, civic organization called Back This Bangladeshi American Community Development and Youth Service. We provide civic service, almost everything, any person with any problem, we help them. So I have a question, I've been hearing people talking about housing need, education need, but I just want to know, did anybody did need assessment? I'm just talking regard, because all the Bangladeshi candidate, I'm specifically asking before, I know, everything start from the home. First, we running election because we think Bangladeshi is ready, that's why we want to run. So I want to ask you a question, did any one of those candidate did the need assessment in Jamaica, what's the most needed? Because as far as our organization, I think right now, I know 114 domestic violence women from Jamaica living in shelter, and nobody supporting. Our organization giving support, not only with this, we over 300 senior, we delivering food from our organization as we speak. I see a lot of social media, I know almost everybody doing a lot of work.
Brother, Brother Ms. Ba, what is the question?
What's the need assessment and the most need in the community of Jamaica? Did anybody did that assessment? I would like to hear what's the...
What is most needed in Jamaica, Queens District 24? Anybody did do an assessment?
Yes.
Let's go to Shoma Said. Oh, it looks like Believe Not wants to answer that one.
Yes, no, I think that was a very excellent question, yes. Look, it's not an assessment, I've been living through this, whether it's school, hospital, or the community, domestic violence is a crisis that are kept in a shadow.
But is that a crisis in District 24, or you're saying it based on his question?
It is a crisis of...
What is the most crisis?
It is one of these crises, because of the new American community, oftentimes we do not report this problem. And by not reporting, is really compound the problem. So the idea is, we need to make easy access to the resource that we have in the city and the state level, so that we can elevate, we can solve and mitigate this problem. Now, recently, in the Melinda Card, she has put together immigration center, where some of this issue are being addressed. And I was, you know, fortunate to serve on a transition team, this is one of the thing we address, and I'm hoping that this thing we can address in a more, much more greater. But look, the real need is three things happening right now. Our children, we failing our children, you know, with this remote learning, in-person learning, there are so many children, they don't have the tools and technology to learn. Our seniors are dying alone. There is a food crisis. If you look at some of the footprintary that are happening in, you know, south side of our district, the line is too long. This is the real crisis. And the next council member needs to come up with a pragmatic solution to solve this. And it cannot be just in what I will do, what we will do, as somebody who has done it, dealt with the community, work with the electoral official, build a unity, build a coalition, can solve and bring a solution to this crisis, this emerging crisis that we have in our district.
Thank you so much, Believe Not. I hope our Bloomberg reporter does not take away that we have so much domestic violence and we're beating up our wives in 24, or vice versa. I hope the other things are of more concern. I think the remote learning, and those are issues. As far as domestic violence goes, I would need to know the statistics to assess that situation. Shoma Said, go ahead, and I don't think that's the case, be living in Jamaica, Queens. Go ahead, Shoma.
Good evening, Abdine, hi, good to see you, and thank you for hosting this, organizing this as well. The issues that I think are the top three issues, they're all integrated, there's no single crisis issue in our district. These three issues are all interlinked. This is lack of employment, which translates into small businesses closing down or keeping open for a couple of hours and not getting any businesses during those hours. That's connected with our food shortages, food insecurity in our district. Because I get, I am involved and partnering with different organization to provide food in District 24 and in Jamaica, in Palmano, all over. And number three is the language accessibility related to remote learning, where we don't have, many homes don't have Wi-Fi, many parents don't speak English, they're not able to teach their kids, the kids are falling behind in schools. So all of this are major crisis, there's no single crisis in our district and in Jamaica. These are crises are all over in District 24. And I have bold solutions, we need to close the digital divide, we need to help our small business owners, and we need to make sure we feed our people. Nobody should be going to sleep hungry, and we need to make sure they're fed and taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Momete, next, please.
Yeah, our struggles are interconnected, and they're intersectional. So we have to address the COVID crisis right now, immediately. We have to bring the sense of urgency to address it, address the families like mine who are struggling to pay rent, address the small businesses that are shutting down because they can't pay their mortgage, right? The small homeowners who are struggling to pay their mortgage. We have to address the issue of unemployment, there's 19 million people who are unemployed. And we have to also think about the half of all immigrants who, in New York City, who did not receive unemployment or federal assistance. And in order to do that, we really need to come up with a comprehensive COVID emergency plan, which includes education, making sure that if our children are doing remote learning, that there's, low-income families have a pool of fund to access where they can buy or afford broadband. Broadband should be free right now. I mean, I'm having issues with my broadband right now, and this is, this is something that's really important, because our kids are trying to do their homework and their internet goes away. They can't, they have to go, I saw pictures of children doing their homework using the Wi-Fi at Taco Bell. Like, this is, this is not what we need. What we need is a city that understands the struggles of low-income families and helping every... Education and remote learning, and helping every single family who's struggling to pay rent, get cash, direct, give them direct cash assistance so that they can pay their rent, and then small homeowners are able to afford their mortgage.
Thank you, Momete, thank you. Mujib Rahman, other question, please? And I see Dr. Janoon has one question also, but right now it's 6:31. I'm going to go next for maybe a closing remarks by the candidates to see why you are the best candidate, and see maybe a pitch for you. Mujib Rahman, please answer the question, and then we'll go to each candidate for their closing remarks, and then we're going to definitely close. Kamal Buiyan wants to say something, we'll give him the last, last word. Thank you, Mujib Rahman.
Thank you, I want thing, currently it doesn't apply for two candidates, anyhow, thank you. Next question, Ms. Ba, I know that's a very long time. He's been great job. To address this issue, I am the person with faith and family. My faith and family is by erotic belief. And now our faith, our domestic victims should be self-supervised, they don't feel comfortable going to city shelter and other things. There are food involved, halal food, ghee food. So if I am elected, this is a left me, I'll try to do something differently, to do right that all our faith-based domestic violence is not a different, separate thing. That's my very specific idea. That's the way I would deal with the community, since this question is our community base, and we are talking about community base. If it's a city-wide issue, that's a different issue. But I respect all the city agencies, they are doing food bank, domestic violence, they are doing their job, but again, that may not fit our need. So once I'm elected, or one of us elected, we can do separately for our faith-based division, that's my point, thank you.
Thank you, brother Mujib Rahman. Closing remarks, Momete, less than one minute.
Look, we need to elect someone who isn't just here to represent the Bangladeshi community, but are putting forth policies that help all of our communities, starting with low-income folks who are struggling during the pandemic, and are able to also build strong coalitions, which I have done. And that is why I have the endorsement of state senators like Julia Salazar, the youngest state Latina state senator elected into the seat. I have the support of the member elected into the Assembly, state Assembly member Ron Kim. I have the support of education activists like Cynthia Nixon, who ran for governor. I have the Zephyr Teach Out, a champion of climate change and ethics, and anti-corruption and antitrust laws. I have the endorsement of organizations like Sister Diaspora, a collective of women from various backgrounds in the city who have endorsed me. I have the endorsement of the Muslim Entrepreneurs Association, which are young people trying to... I have the endorsement of the Muslim Entrepreneurs Association, which are young people trying to start small businesses. I have the support and endorsement of Hispanic American Voters Association. And I'm seeking out more endorsements. And I also have the endorsement of Congressman Ro Khanna, who is a champion of a green, of the Green New Deal along with AOC in Congress and climate justice.
I'm sorry, Momita, your time is up, I'm getting away
I just want to say, I feel like I have the, I do have the best chance, I'm poised
We hear, we hear you, we, we hear you, we'll make our decision, thank you so much, Shoma Said.
Thank you for this opportunity. I would be so proud to represent the people in District twenty-four because right now we don't have leadership. There's a vacuum of leadership. And I'm, I'm not running because this is gonna be a stepping stone for another position. I grew up in this community, I know the struggles, I am part of that struggle, I'm part of that American dream and success story. I know hard work and I've done it, I've worked in a McDonald's, I've worked in a clothing store, standing up for eight, ten hours. One evening, I fell asleep in the subway because I was so tired. I know the struggles. I am able to build coalition because I am the first South Asian president of the Queens Canadian Bar Association in ninety years' history. I'm the chairperson of New York State Bar Association Lawyer Referral Information Service. We are taking care of sixty-five counties and upstate. I have leadership. When I get to city council, I'm gonna work hard for you because that's what I've done all my life and I will continue to do so. I did it yesterday, I've done it during the pandemic, I will do it today and I'll do it tomorrow. So please vote for me and support me, thank you.
Thank you so much. Let's go to Mujib Rahman, as he has been always going last.
Thank you. I'm different compared to all others. I'm the only one probably for the safety issue and cleanness. For safety, we need law and order. I'm against default because I want a strong law enforcement with real justice. I am for good education for our children and I need higher education. Those failure schools could be not funded or they should be improving. In that case, we have much better choice. I will make sure all religious establishment is safe. And those who can go on and off, just, safety should be priority, family should be safe. Those are my priority, but I cannot do anything until I got elected. I'm not going all by what I did, those who know, you know, I start the community, immigration-wise, job-wise. I am for job creation, not proposing jobs, I don't know who is here support close the Amazon in Queens County. I am for it, that will create jobs. So I am for jobs.
Thank you so much, Brother Mujib Rahman. That was funny, that was a chatishleti coming from your, from the microphones.
So to create jobs, I support establishment in Queens County. So I am not socialist or communist, I came here to for better life, not to pursue one side, please allow everybody. So please vote for me and I, my issue and idea fits for everybody, Republican, conservative, even other party also. Of course, I am a Democrat, but different types of Democrats, that fits among other communities, other parties. Thank you very much, please vote for me and also vote for all four of us. And again, request, please vote for all four of us. If you think I'm the best, to be number one, thank you all.
Thank you so much, Dilip Na.
Thank you, thank you for allowing me to speak before you and also all the viewer who is watching these town hall virtually. Look, I'm a true testament to the American dream. When I came here at the age of sixteen, since then, there is not a single odd job that you can think of that I have not done. Whether, you know, working at the construction site or cleaning the dishes, driving cab and put through myself into college and get to where I am today. I have became a transformative leader, I'm being a wealth of experience in the higher education and healthcare vertical. I'm a pragmatic leader. I'm honored to also report to you that and I'm, you know, honored to receive those two significant endorsements today. Former councilwoman Elizabeth Crowley has endorsed our campaign. And also Assemblywoman Kathy Nolan, she also endorsed our campaign. These are the true leader and they believe that platform that we put forward is, is so much needed for our community. If I have the honor and privilege to be your councilman, I will make our community proud. And I think I'll bring the leadership that are so much required to move forward our city into the right direction. And thank you all very much, if you want to know more about me, please visit us at notforNY.com, thank you.
Thank you so much, thank you, I thank everyone for joining us here. I cannot mention all, right now seventy-three, but I know at points we had more than ninety-plus. Thank you to all of our elected officials, Robert Jackson, Jennifer Rajkumar, our TV personalities, Henry Goldman, Shaanaz Hussein, Shahidullah as well. Our other city council members who, city council candidates who are running from other districts such as Khalid Al Miri. I know Mohammed Shabiruddin is here, I think he's gonna run in the primary in June. So I thank all of you, I cannot mention all of you. Kamal Bhuyan, please, your closing remarks and then we're going to definitely close. I'm gonna press the end button and that's it, you're gonna see me last time and you're gonna hear me for the last time, at least for today. Thank you.
Dear respected brothers and sisters, there's no doubt in our mind that all four candidates who are here today for this council District twenty-four are well-qualified. You have proven yourself in many ways, many aspects, many different ways that you are qualified, no doubt of doubt about us, about that. But I just also want to let you know, Bangladeshi American Advocacy Group, among with other organization, whoever we choose, that is not that you're not qualified. You are, we've chosen because we find that other candidate is more qualified to lead the council District twenty-four than the others. Brothers and sisters, most importantly, the purpose of their, of these forums today was to unify the community, to unify, to bring our candidates into one. Robert Jackson, our beloved senators, has mentioned very beginning that if we're running for, for candidates from one county, one council districts and we have ten percent of votes among ourselves, are we really gonna win if all four running? Our humble request would be that, consider yourself, think about yourself. One of the brother asked, what makes you to, what makes you that you're most qualified? If you find yourself that you can help other candidate to win, we'd like to request to you to do that at your own will. Respected, a, a public official, we'd like to, Bangladeshi American Advocacy Group would like to thank you for joining us, to help us to, to choose the right candidate for council District twenty-four. We thank you from the bottom of our hearts. Respected viewers, we thank you for joining us from all over the New York cities to make this event successful. All the sponsors, thank you for joining, thank you for your support. May God bless you, may God bless us all from this pandemic time. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone, thank you.
Thank you, good job.
Good night.
Thanks.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, good night, everyone, appreciate it, everyone.